I'm Kimberly Williams and I am just a community member that was concerned about the schools. I'm a product of the district. I went to Riverside and I graduated from Creston. And as a person who has the experience of what the district is like, and I feel like it was during a really good time in the district, that I bring a unique experience with that as a person who was educated in the district. So I think that's an asset to being able to be in this position as a candidate, as well as I am a community member. I've lived in the community my whole life and I have seen some of the good, the bad, and the ugly, but I've also seen some great successes with the public schools. And so I wanted to be a part of that change that was happening and the upswing in where the district is going. So after some conversation with some different community members and my family, we decided to put my hat in the ring, again, just not as a politician, but a concerned citizen in the community. I'm a vested member and I am concerned about our district, whether my children are in the district or not. They both are college students now and I think that the plight of the city is directly impacted by the school systems. And so I wanted to be a part of that change. So I am a graduate of Western Michigan. I have a degree in criminal justice and sociology. I also have a master's degree from Ferris State University in criminal justice administration. I've worked for the state for about 20 years and I've always worked in investigator capacity. I've been involved with CPS, probation parole, as well as I'm currently a civil rights investigator. And so I'd just like to be able to bring those talents to the district.
All right. Hi, I'm Chad Patton. I am running for Grand Rapids Public School Board just because, one, I love this community. And Grand Rapids Public Schools, they represent so much being a part of this community. And it's really, I think, a cornerstone for it. My interaction with Grand Rapids Public Schools has been as an educator, as a community partner, as well as, you know, somebody who is just an overall stakeholder. I've worked in the schools, teaching at Union High School and Innovation Central High School. And while I've never been, you know, I like to be clear with this, I've never been on payroll for GRPS. But I'm a certified instructor in English and Spanish. So I've had that experience. And I taught with Trio Upper Bound in both of those schools. And then I moved on to teach with, to work with Trio Talent Search to help low-income first-generation college-bound students to go to college. I advise them. I help them fill out their FAFSA's. I talked about different opportunities for them to help them move up and graduate and move into new careers. And so after that, I ended up working for the Literacy Center of West Michigan. I have my master's in adult and higher education through Grand Valley State University as well. And I've become just an overall advocate for literacy and just an overall advocate for success within our schools. I became a mentee at Innovation Central High School. And currently, I'm a reading tutor over at my community school, their neighborhood school, which is Mulick Park Elementary. And so I think overall, my adult career has really kept me involved and in touch with Grand Rapids Public Schools. And I've been an advocate for public education throughout that career. But more importantly, I recognize the importance of having strong schools and strong public schools. And so, you know, a big part of my platform is to see what you've made here at Congress Elementary throughout all of Grand Rapids. And so that's just one part of it. I'll talk about a few more as we get down to business here.
Good evening, everyone. My name is John Matias and I am currently a school board member. I have been on the school board for five and a half years. I was appointed when Sanita Lanier became city commissioner and then elected to my first term. And in those five and a half years, I've learned how the district functions and feel that that experience is going to help the next four years if I'm elected. I am a product of public schools via Chicago. I grew up in Chicago, inner city. And similar to high school-like Union, 60% dropout rate. And when I graduated, I was at top of my class, which meant that I was not prepared for college. That experience really motivated me because I didn't see very many people like me in the guidance area, which is what my degree is in. I have a master's degree from Western Michigan University in educational counseling, as well as a seminary degree from Calvin Seminary, and a bachelor equivalently from Calvin Seminary College as well. I worked in Union High School for about four and a half years as an at-risk counselor, really helping these kids get through high school, very similar to my own experience. I have four kids that went through Grand Rapids Public Schools. I lived down the street here for the last 18 years in East Town. And so I'm very vested in this community, especially, I've given a lot of my time to the Latino community, working through the Delta Project and many other projects in terms of addressing some of the needs of our broader underrepresented communities. So I feel like I bring that experience into the boardroom. As others have said, I don't consider myself a politician, but you have to politic. And I've learned that in our school district as well. We have to be able to work together to accomplish these things. And we really have seen a lot of those. I'm hoping that in the next four years, I'll be able to add more of that experience. Thanks.
Bienvenidos. Gracias por estar aquí esta noche. Welcome. Thank you for being here this evening. I'm Jose Flores. I am a product of the Grand Rapids Public Schools. We came here back in 1956 as farmworkers, working in the fields, out in the sticks, if you will, the surrounding areas of Grand Rapids. And we settled in and made Grand Rapids our home and have been here ever since. I've served as an educator in the Grand Rapids Public Schools. I have a 30-year history, retired some years ago. And after 17 years of teaching US History and Social Studies and a number of other classes through many of the schools, including Ottawa Central High School, Southwest Community Campus, Burton Middle School, great experience. I spent 17 years as a central office administrator, running bilingual education and migrant education and Native American education. And as a resident of the southwest side, which is that, you know, where it gets kind of brown, Hispanic, because we live in a segregated Grand Rapids community, I have been an advocate for Hispanic issues. I started the Hispanic Center of Western Michigan, which continues to thrive today, the Hispanic Festival, which celebrates National Hispanic Heritage Month. I've tried to be an integrationist to promote the positive elements of what Hispanic Americans contribute to this society every day in our community. Graduated from Central High School in 1971, went on to Eastern Michigan University, earned my bachelor's there, came home and earned my master's degree from Grand Valley State University, and then developed a project relationship with Wayne State University, where I earned my doctorate in education. And obviously, I'm bilingual, hold a bilingual endorsement, challenged the district on many issues of equity and equality, on underperformance, and on academic achievement for our students. I believe that 100% graduation rates are possible. I'll just take a show of hands. How many of you would like to have every one of your students, your children, graduate from high school? How many have that goal? Okay? Tell me, do you think that 66% would be adequate if we said to you, "Well, you know, out of the three kids you have, I'm sorry, you know, one of them will not graduate"? Well, we don't want that for our children either.
My name is Michael Bukel. I am a retired school teacher from Grand Rapids Public Schools. I only tended one year in Grand Rapids, and that was in 1967 as a kindergartner. But I went to the prokial schools within the Diocese of Grand Rapids. And I considered working in Grand Rapids like my mission, working with the urban poor. Like Mother Teresa of Calcutta, she said, "Those that pray believe, and those that believe love, and those that love serve." So I served the urban poor in our community. I tried to do it to the best of my ability. I graduated from Grand Valley and actually, I started college in 1980. And I went through 98. And I wasn't in a slow program. I just loved to learn. So I have a bachelor's in science. I have two master's degrees, and one in early childhood and one in elementary education. I also have a reading endorsement, besides the endorsement in early childhood. So I also taught at Grand Valley State at 698. And I would be the instructor for Advanced Studies in Human Growth and Development. And being in that position, I could take what I was doing in my classroom and relate it to the instructional material that I was teaching at the graduate level. And that way, I could help the teachers help their students become better learners and the teachers become better learners. And I think that's really important. And the reason I'm running for Grand Rapids School Board is because our school system is in trouble. I mean, other people are talking about, Rosie, I'm going to tell you how it is. We have really serious problems. When I first started in education in 1985, we had over 40,000 students in Grand Rapids Public Schools. Forty thousand, I think we may have been close to 44,000. And now we're hovering just above 16,000. And we have to ask, why are we losing students? And I can tell you from personal experience that, I don't want to sound mean or negative, but our school system does not really care about our children. I mean, we have to fight tooth and nail to get what we want because all comes down to money. And that seems to be a problem. We need to educate our children the best possible way. But we should not have to worry about money when it comes to specialized services and other things. Thank you.
Thanks. My name is Tony Baker. I want to thank you all for hosting this event tonight and meeting some of the younger parents in the room. That, I want to thank you all for sending your kids to Grand Rapids Public Schools and choosing Grand Rapids Public Schools because I live in and near this neighborhood. I know that you probably had lots of conversations with people, encourage you to go to other school systems. I, like you, about 11 years ago, I had a third grader and a kindergartner. And there was a person on the school board who quit in the middle of a school board meeting. And I decided that night, I'd been in Grand Rapids for about 10 years. I was a professor at Ferris. I had just received tenure. And I was wanting to get more involved in the community where my kids were going to school. And spent lots of time in Chicago before I got here. And I thought that this was the perfect time. And I ran for schools and thinking that I had some skills and cared a lot and could contribute to improving Grand Rapids Public Schools and, you know, making it more equitable for the whole city and kind of getting past some of these challenges where people were leaving the city or people either for perceptions or, you know, whatever their concerns were. But I had no idea exactly what I was getting into. The last 10 years in public education has been an incredible challenge. And so in, just some quick numbers, in 2008, we had approximately $7,500 per pupil. In 2011, that dropped to $6,900. Only just now, got back to that same figure. That's not adjusted for inflation. We're at that same figure right now. That's despite rising pension costs, rising health insurance, rising expectations, technology, et cetera. And so we're educating our children with much fewer resources. Teachers, we spent 10 years bashing public teachers. And in popular culture, it became not just to blame teachers for children not learning, but to blame teachers for poverty itself. Despite all of those negative consequences and experiences, we have built a fantastic school system over the last 10 years, certainly over the last six or seven years. A great board, great superintendent. We have a lot of work to do. And I've been happy that I've been able to be a part of building what we have and looking forward to continuing that work. I love being on the school board.
All right. Thank you so much, you guys. I would like to point out that we did have a candidate who was not able to make it, Kimberly Davis. She has provided some literature here up at the table that, you know, once the forum is over, we'll be able to, you guys are more than welcome to come up and look at it. We'll answer some of the questions that are posed here. And this is going to be directed to all of the candidates. Who do you listen to in order to know what's working and what's not working in the district? And what voices will you include if you are elected to the board?
Well, I think it's important to listen to both administrators, parents, the teachers, the students themselves. So there's a lot of people to listen to in regards to what's going on with the district. I have tried to keep lines of communications open with community members who are vested and that are in our schools. Some teach in the district and some teach outside the district. Some are just residents of the community and care about our children as well, don't have children in the district. So I'm trying to really widen my net to be able to gather information with regards to concerns and issues. I don't have any counsel set in stone. I'm open to learning and receiving feedback from all areas and from all people who are concerned with regards to the district and our children. So I think that there's a wealth of information and to just take it from one source or take it from just one arena would be a disservice. So I am definitely open to listening to all of those areas influence. But I truly am concerned about what our students are saying as well. So.
Yeah, I mean, I would say it's important to make sure, you know, as somebody who's representing an entire district, that you're listening to all of the stakeholders. And I think what's important is, you know, if you're in the district, you are a stakeholder. And I think that that's been something that's been important to me. A lot of people have asked, you know, a big question that comes up for me specifically is, do you have kids? And I don't, but I still consider myself a stakeholder. And I still look at myself as somebody who came to this community, like many others are currently doing, coming to this community in Grand Rapids. And they're making a choice as to whether or not they want to send their children to Grand Rapids Public Schools. And so right now, I look at that as a critical viewpoint to build that, to build that social capital within all of Grand Rapids Public Schools. And so I think that we need to make sure that we're getting out, that everyone has a voice and that everyone is able to provide a voice as to how they want to see their schools run. And so I think then it becomes incumbent upon myself to make sure that I'm creating avenues for people to reach out to me, but also that I'm reaching out to people. So as I've been working on my campaign, I've made myself accessible. But that's not, you know, just because I built it doesn't mean people are going to come. And I can't expect that. So I think the next step is, one, obviously, making myself available to forums like these, but also making myself available on a regular basis throughout the community. And then another item I would say is recently, I just got the endorsement for Equity PAC. And one area that they're encouraging me to focus on is finding out how I can lift up voices that haven't been heard throughout Grand Rapids Public Schools. And one thing that I told them and really pitched to them about doing is that I want to make sure that refugee voices are heard throughout Grand Rapids Public Schools to make sure that everyone can hear what their critical issues are and how we can make our schools better, not just for them, but everyone. But I want them to be heard.
I think that in the five and a half years, I've, if you look at our website, it most definitely has the information. You all know where I live. And so you can actually camp out there. And it has happened. But seriously, I look at talking to teachers because I worked with KSSN in the schools. I got to know at Burton, Westwood, I got to know a lot of the community through that endeavor and a lot of relationships where people are able to talk about what's going on, saw firsthand some of the, some of the lack of resources that our, that our schools had. And I think that gave an advantage in looking at, at now being on the boardroom and being able to speak to issues that really weren't being brought up. Certainly, the Hispanic community, because I'm bilingual, people feel that they're able to talk in their language to me. I agree. The refugee voices, I'm a therapist, a trauma therapist in the community as well. And so I see a lot of the, a lot of the issues of effects of many different issues in our community. I most definitely listen to our administrators and our superintendent in terms of the broader issues, a lot of the financial issues that are going on in our district. We get wind of that and trying to, trying to filter all of that information. Sometimes it's very difficult to understand where the streams of finances go and also where we make the decisions about our schools. And so I listen to my community. They're able to speak to me and email, phone, so.
Well, I've been a community advocate all of my, my life, I guess, since graduating from high school and was very involved in, during my high school years, too. And being such and being outspoken, I have a lot of people that come to me. And serving on the board right now, you know, I get, I don't want to say dozens, but I, at least a half a dozen emails on issues within, you know, a couple of weeks' time, and people wanting to meet with me. And I think it's because I'm, one, reform-minded, I'm independent, and I'm determined to make a change. And then I'm unbridled. I say what needs to be said. And I'm usually well-founded in research, and I'm questioning the narrative, and I'm questioning equality issues. And I'm present when there's inequality in our, in our society, in our, in our local society, whether that's in education or whether it's in politics, or whether it's in police services, or whatever. You know, we didn't have interpreters in the hospitals and in the 911 system. I was out there challenging the courts and the hospitals to provide bilingual interpreters. We didn't have enough bilingual teachers. So I was in, in front of the Board of Education when I was a teacher saying, and when I was an administrator, saying, "We need more bilingual teachers in our system so that we have an equal footing in the classroom, so that our children can grow up to be doctors and lawyers and police officers and firefighters," you know? We need to be part of this society. And we need to be accepted. And we need to remove all the barriers that relate to language and into inequality. And we need equal treatment by the police force and by our educators. And we need to see ourselves reflected in the classroom and in the administration of our buildings and in the direction of our, of our school, the central office of our school system. And so I listen to parents. And I don't think that we should be threatening to sue them when they criticize us. I don't think that, that we should, should take an adversarial role with the people who we serve. I think we can do a lot better, and we ought to be. And we ought to be listening to them. And then I question the data because I have an education and that I understand how data is manipulated and how we can say, well, the glass is half full when in fact it's half empty. And yes, you know, we need to be more critical in that process.
As a retired public school teacher, I do know what's working and what's not working in Grand Rapids Public Schools. In my classrooms, I taught pretty much early childhood. And we need a good foundational base for the children. They need to learn how to read and then reading to learn through comprehension. But part of the problem is their children aren't getting the support that they need. Classrooms are overcrowded. And sometimes the children would need specialized services. And the school district would deny those. And that is the truth. And I was often told to lose paperwork, which is against the law, isn't it, Dr. Flores? And that's just really disgusting. And I would have to go undermine the administration and provide the parents with a parent advocate because they would know the law and how to circumvent the disingenuous administration trying to spend the money, like I talked about before, and not provide these children with the specialized services that they needed. For instance, one little boy in my classroom, the last year I taught, he was autistic. And the school district said he was provisional autistic and when he was two. They looked at his IEP. And then they exited him from the program. And he now, I said to the mother, "What they did to you was illegal." And I told her she should go after the district for what they'd done. But she ended up enrolling him in Forest Hills. And she was at one of the board meetings. And the last time I was at a board meeting, I was giving the gavel. But this is a problem. We need to spend money where money is needed, in the classrooms. And we need to remove the top-heavy administration. We have way too many people that are making hundreds of thousands of dollars and not doing their job.
So voices from the community. I, there's two, two main ways that I think, first of all, I make myself, we have to be connected to the community, across the community. And no one board member can be connected to all the sectors of the community that need to be responsible. So I respect and support and listen to board members. I mean, with Kathy Lewis over here, who is a board member who volunteers in her granddaughter's elementary classroom, Aberdeen. We need to have people from across the district, talking to people, engage with people on the board. And we need to listen to each other on the board because it's absolutely crucial because we'll never know that. Myself, most of what I do is connecting myself to community organizations that allow me to have a voice to the city. So I'm on several boards, Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, Hispanic Center, Salvation Army. I'm chair of the two colleges through college, so I can find out from high school students what their experiences are as they head off to college and help to find ways to help them to navigate this kind of very much of a foreign culture that the college can be. Listening to, and so I'm in the community a lot. I need to rely on other board members who are in the community a lot. And then over the years, I've been able to get connections to, especially teachers, other people who work in the district. And so I have essentially advisors. Every time that there's a meeting and I hear people from the public express concerns, I'm texting those people as soon as, as soon as this meeting is over. And another thing to go with that is that the board, and I, the board listens to public comment. The board listens to concerns and criticisms that come to the district. The board also listens to the successes and needs to be engaged. And the way we communicate that is by working with the administration. And so we have to hear people. We have to expect that people get heard. And we have to hold our fellow board members accountable for that.
I'm going to switch up the order, too, to keep you guys on your toes. Next question is balancing priorities is a key task of the board. There are times when these priorities are sometimes in competition and ultimately impact the well-being of our children. Tell us your top three priorities, top three priorities, and why these are the most important priorities for our children. I'm going to keep this mic. Dr. Flores, if you can move this one down. We're going to start with, let's start with Mr. Patton.
Hello. All right. Perfect. All right. Well, having difficulty with figuring out a mic, so sorry about that. So yeah, my top three priorities. I'd say number one right now with the Michigan reading bill that came through, what, about a year ago, our current second graders, next year, when they reach third grade, they will be at risk of being held back if they're not reading by grade level. My work with literacy, specifically with adults, has helped inform that. It's helped proper literacy programs. It's helped me understand that while we need to have a good curriculum and an important curriculum that is culturally sensitive as well, we also need to make sure that, that we understand everything that goes into a child learning how to read and create support for, for families and throughout the community by using those community supports. So that's, that's been really important to me because that will affect graduation rates if we're not finding quality solutions for that. The, the next thing is going to be, you know, I mentioned my, the, my neighborhood school that I get into at Mulick Park. And that's been, neighborhood schools are important, I think. Once, once again, this is a phenomenal neighborhood school. And I think that this model can be replicated all across the community. And in so doing, I really believe that that will create equitable results throughout our entire community. I think there, that there are certain schools that, that need to have more of a focus with neighborhood schools. And then the last one is going to be investing in students by investing in teachers, you know, creating that quality support system. When teachers aren't there, students don't succeed. And when teachers aren't invested in, that quality of instruction is limited. So those are my three.
All right. I think being, being a therapist, one of the things that I worked at KSSN was really the socio-emotional. We've, we've had a tremendous amount of kids being suspended. And then the lack of the support that the teachers get within the classroom to deal with, if there's overcrowding to begin with. And then we have kids who have either behavior problems or other issues that are impending their education. I've had the privilege of sitting on the academic committee and sifting through a lot of that data that can be really misleading. And so having a way of actually seeing what's really there, and then the accountability pieces to that. So for me, it's, it's holding the administration accountable to what they say they're going to do and then the resources that are, that each of our 52 schools need, and they're very unique, just like this one is, to be able to do that. The other is certainly being mentioned is giving teachers what they need in their classroom to be able to teach, both the support, if we're going to have, you know, classrooms Both the support, if we're going to have, you know, classrooms that have many students in them, more than usual, then we need the supports within that, those classrooms, in order to be able to teach what they need to learn. And then, for me, another issue is the curriculum pieces. What are we doing really to follow our kids, our feeder schools, so that the buck is not passed? Really concerned and asking a lot of deep questions in terms of, do you know what each of you is doing in order to, if you know that you have X amount of kids underrepresented or underperforming, what are you doing to address that as they go forward?
Well, I'm known for speaking truth to power, and some people don't like that. You know, they think we ought to be rubber-stamping everything that the superintendent says and does and wants promoted or approved that night. I don't believe in that. I think that what we have to do is make sure that we're discerning what the data is saying and we're actually being data-driven. And, you know, I live and work in a community, I have a little grocery store on the southwest side, so I see the effects of not educating all of our children and what that means to a community. And in my community, it happens to be heavily Hispanic. So I see the kids, many of those kids that I have taught over the years, too, you can't teach them all, but I've certainly taught, you know, thousands of kids during my tenure in the school system and impacted the outcomes for children and tried to improve upon our educational system. So for me, priority number one is graduation rates. And when I ask you the question about what do you want for your children, you know, we're a minority-majority school district. That means the vast majority of our students are black and brown. Now, I want graduation rates of 100%, and I think they're possible. And I hope that the next leader that we have in our superintendent's chair is able to draw from an experience of being a teacher and a building leader and a district leader in a district where they have turned it around, where they have taken and improved graduation rates at a faster pace than we're doing. We're too quick to put out a narrative to say that, you know, over the past five years we've increased by 16%. We'll do the math and divide that. You know, it's less than 4%. So what we have to do is make sure that we're challenging and holding this district accountable. So I think that, reduce the dropout rate and make sure that we have more than 25% of our children on grade level at the third grade. We cannot afford to lose another generation.
Repetition is a better part of learning, and I said before, I would like to see the administration cut and money put back into the classrooms, like a house needs a stern foundation. We need to have children being able to decode in kindergarten and first grade, and then in second grade, they'll be reading through comprehension. And by third grade, they should be able to be able to read on level. But part of the problem that I see in Grand Rapids is that the teachers are not supported. I know for me, for instance, I had problems with the administration. I've known Tony Baker for many years. I told him some of the problems I was having down at the Y, and he just said, "You know, I'm only one person on the board. I'm afraid you'll be targeted." So really, they don't listen. In fact, I actually mailed a packet of information to all the school board members and why I was choosing to run with a timeline, a sequence of events, because my classroom has been attacked over and over, and no teacher should have to be put in that position to have their teaching authority undermined when teaching is challenged enough in the inner city. And that's just wrong. And I also think school safety is a big concern because in my tenure within the school district, I've had problems with, well, not me personally, but a child had brought a BB gun to school and shot up the gymnasium, and he was only expelled for, or suspended a few days. And we also had problems with another child bringing a knife. These are major concerns, and even kids starting fires in wastebaskets. But these things are kind of hidden from the public and the school board because it gets negative connotations for the principal and the school. But we need to address these issues and be honest and be truth-tellers, like Dr. Flores had said.
First of all, I do think it's important that when, if you're hearing charges about things that have happened in the school district, there are people that you can go to to find out whether or not these things are true. So I'm reluctant to answer this question about priorities because this is the fourth time I've run for the office, and every time I've had a set of priorities, I didn't know what was coming our way. So when I first ran years, 11 years ago, 10 years ago, it was early childhood education, and that's certainly been something that's been up and down in terms of its investment by our community over the years. Currently, I do agree that we need to extend the transformation plan. It needs to be, it needs to be effective throughout the city. There are certainly parts of the city where the transformation plan has not been as effective as it has even at this school. Certainly, I mean, I agree with Superintendent Neal. I mean, she said a year ago on her State of the Schools address that our work was not done until Ottawa Hills High School experienced the same levels of success as other schools. We have still improved dramatically, but I do think that we need to extend the transformation plan in Ottawa Hills High School and some other schools that we need to really focus on, and, you know, that work is beginning. We need to, I do a lot of work with getting students off to college and succeeding in college, and I believe that one of the things that will increase our high school graduation rate is giving students a chance to get to college afterwards and knowing that college is accessible. And that's taken a lot of work. We've done a lot of work, and that is definitely a very important priority that I would have to continue. And again, you know, that work is already underway, especially with our investment in Two Colleges Through College. The work that's happening at Innovation Central High School right now is fantastic. And also, we need to, as a community, as a school board, as a district, need to continue to argue for increased resources for our schools. We need to get back to where we were across the district. These challenges that teachers face are often due to the fact that they have too many students, and we don't have enough resources to address their concerns.
Well, my priorities are a little broad, but I think because they're broad, they will help us get to some of the smaller things when we address them. Advocacy, that is a primary concern for me. I've always been a person who advocated for our children and our community, and I think our parents and students need to be comfortable in being able to advocate for themselves in the, with the district with regards to their concerns and issues, and be heard and to see strides in growth in that area where the concerns are brought up repeatedly. Overall, academic excellence. This is a big issue for me because I work in the criminal justice system, and I realize that if we don't educate, we incarcerate. And to shut down that school-to-prison pipeline, we have to make sure we have academic excellence and that we are requiring it from our staff, our students, and our administrators. And when we do that, we will see those graduation rates increase. We will see the students are not just being able to regurgitate, but they're actually learning, and they are able to retain this information. So academic excellence is a primary concern for me, as well as school safety. I understand that we have to provide a safe space and a learning environment that is conducive. And our children, they're entitled to that.
Thank you so much, guys. So our next question is, again, directed at all of you. Superintendent Teresa Weatherall Neal announced in September that she will be retiring after the school year. As a member of the school board that chooses her replacement, what qualities would you be looking for in a new superintendent? And just due to time, we are going to limit this question. We have a couple of follow-up superintendent questions. We're going to limit this question to 90 seconds.
So, yeah, just having the hindsight of five and a half years, I think that, I certainly believe that our next superintendent ought to be able to continue to bring us together as a community and stakeholders, and then set a clear path for teacher retention, for what our teachers need to succeed, and then our families and our students to succeed as well. I know that a lot of our families, particularly Hispanic families, they want their kids to learn. They themselves can't because of language barriers or even lack of education. And so it's really critical to be able to have resources. We have things called Community School, Kansas City Services Network, that partner. I think the stakeholder, one of the phenomenal things that Teresa has been able to do is bring together stakeholders. And we need to continue to allow those folks to have an impact on what's going on, especially if they're giving the school other monies that the state doesn't give us, but to be able to do that. So I expect a leader that's communicating both with the board, but also with its administration, and then with its teachers and community.
I think, one, we as a community, including our Board of Education members, we need to make sure that we are not short-changed in the process of selecting an educational leader that has classroom experience, that has building-level administration experience, and that has been in charge and produced a turnaround district somewhere in this country, if not somewhere in this region. The last process did not include the level of community engagement that is required to select a qualified leader. And I think we're really suffering in this district right now from the type of leadership that we need to move us forward and to produce the greater results that we're capable of achieving. The greatest number of stakeholders are the children and the parents of this district. And we have to look at the demographics of this district. I've, for years, have been telling the district, "Listen, you cannot afford to fail African-American children and Hispanic children because we are the critical masses that make up the population of enrollment in this district. If you fail to educate one group, then you completely fail." And that's why our numbers are flat. They're not doing what is needed to be done in tailoring their instruction and the interventions necessary to make sure that every one of our children graduate from high school and succeed in college.
Before I give my answer, I'd like to say, I take kind of umbrage with Tony Baker saying that, saying if things were true or not true, some of the statements I said, and they were true. In fact, I just want to backpedal a little bit about the bullets. Some were found on the bus and in the bathroom, and the mother ended up going to the principal and then to the security officer, had her left in tears, and she ended up pulling her kids out of our school system. But our superintendent, I've had my words with Teresa because Teresa and I did not get along. In fact, the administration and I did not get along because I was forced to sign a confidential agreement over some sexual issues going on within the district. And I personally was sexually and physically assaulted, and I asked for help and didn't get it. And no teacher should have to deal with that kind of crap. Now, as far as with Teresa, when I confronted her, I told her she wasn't a very good superintendent because she was a Title I paper pusher. She had no classroom experience. She had no experience as an administrator, as a principal. And she was making all the educational decisions for our school district. And we can see that now with the drop in enrollment because she's been in our district almost 40 years, and enrollment continued to drop, and we have low test scores and kids are not reading. So we need to have an educator, preferably a PhD, and someone who had classroom experience and administration experience as a principal. Thank you.
So the timing on this, having the election happen in a couple of weeks, a couple of months after the announcement, the next board won't be seated until January. We don't know, it's five of, as you know, five of the board members haven't been elected yet, so it's been a difficult time to make plans. We have begun working towards finding out a way to do a community engagement process. The community engagement process can learn from the community what their priorities are now, and that community engagement process will likely include people, perhaps everybody in this room, if you choose to participate, and we will have that information that we can work with in January. I agree that we need two main priorities. We do need someone, as Dr. Flores has said, that has, that understands the classroom, has been a teacher, understands building administration level, and is a leader, and can follow through with many of the issues that have, the changes that have taken in Grand Rapids Public Schools under the current superintendent. And we need somebody who we can be sure that can invest in this, in this community. And so I was on the board when we had the previous superintendent before Teresa Neal, and it was a really devastating time. And so one of the first things that I would imagine that the board will be concerned with is how invested, how do they know this community, and are they invested in making sure that this community succeeds and its schools succeed?
As someone that is from the community, I would hope we would be looking at someone from the community as well. I think we have had some experiences with some outsiders that are not necessarily vested in our community and has wreaked havoc on our school systems. So I would like to see us invest in someone who's already a stakeholder in the community. But I am also hoping that we look for someone who is not afraid to challenge the status quo and be able to think outside of the box. Grand Rapids, we can sometimes be conservative, and I believe challenging situations require some creative thinking sometimes. And I'd hope we'd get someone who would be willing to be creative and challenge the norm and say, "There's some other things happening across the country, and they're having great impacts, and let's look at some of those things."
Yeah, I'm going to agree with everyone here in that for a baseline, we need to have somebody who understands being a teacher, who understands administration, but overall who understands the community. I think that, you know, we've seen GRPS starting to move, you know, it's really moved toward how to build that trust throughout the community, and that needs to continue. And I also think that building trust within Grand Rapids Public Schools is just as important. So creating that transparency, creating that trust, and listening to the community is going to be, you know, a lot of great characteristics that I'm going, that I would like to see in the next superintendent. I think the other thing that I would bring up, too, is that Grand Rapids Public Schools, it is the third-largest employer within our community, right? And this is something that I didn't know until I threw my hat into the ring. And so this is going to be a very large team that the superintendent will be leading. And so communication is going to be key, and understanding that there are great growth opportunities within this community, for our community. There's great talent here, and I think GRPS, this is why everyone's a stakeholder, GRPS is creating that talent as soon as students come into the door. And so they want to make sure that they're graduating and that they are talented.
Thank you. I want to restate expectations that if we go off track a little bit, we may redirect. And we have a lot of questions from the audience to address tonight, so I want to get to that and be as precise as we can with these. In regards to the past decreasing number of students in the GRPS system, what do you believe that we can do to keep our families in our schools as well as attract new families to not be able to go outside the district? If we could start with Dr. Flores, please.
You know, I have been an advocate for bilingual education for many years, and some of our board members believe that Grand Rapids is not ready politically for bilingual education. It's outrageous. It is a narrow-minded, bigoted response to educating the children who come to school already knowing, in many cases, how to read in their native language. And all we have to do is help them through a receptive bilingual approach, meet their educational needs, and switch from one language to the other, and then develop both of those languages equally. We've already demonstrated it works. We have a superior program at Southwest Community Campus where dual-language immersion is successful, but yet we will not replicate it. We've had other leaders from across the country share their experiences with us, other superintendents, that this project works, that this process works, that we, when we accept a person's native language and then develop that with equal competence in English, that the children are better off for it, that it helps in their self-esteem, not only learning the language but self-esteem, which is important for success in school. So we need to make sure that we're doing other things than we're currently doing, other approaches, and begin to open up our minds about bilingual education.
I think in order to maintain the student population we have, we need to treat the parents and teachers and the children with respect. We need to support our teachers. Parents are not valued, children are not valued in our district. Take it from me, someone who's been within our district, I know what's wrong, I know what's broken. What happens with, if you challenge the administration, the administration attacks a teacher and undermines their authority. A couple of times I spoke out of the school board, my classroom assignment was changed twice. I was given a new assignment with a split class. I was not given any teacher manuals. They also threw away $5,000 worth of my They also threw away $5,000 worth of my supplemental material, set me up to fail. Who are they hurting? They're hurting the children. They're hurting the parents who send their children into our school system, and we're entrusting those children in our care. And that is a real serious problem. And I think that needs to stop. And for a person to exploit another child's education to set up personal vodectas, like the school administration and the board had against me for the knowledge that I had, is just sick and wrong. And those type of things need to stop. And in order for us to maintain their population, student population, we need to treat, again, children and parents with respect, and support teachers and not set them up to fail.
One thing, every board member, every current board member believes in bilingual education and would love to expand it as much as possible, but there are, there are not enough teachers to teach bilingual education at this time. And look at the, look at the schools of ed and find bilingual teachers, and we'll be recruiting them. Southwest Community Campus is a great example. One of the ways that we're increasing enrollment is by creating schools, K-8 schools, pre-K-8 schools that had been successful are now becoming high schools. So next year, we will be extending the Southwest Community Campus from a K-8 school to a K-12 school, beginning with ninth grade. We've been opening up new options. We need to, shoring up Ottawa Hills High School, making sure Ottawa Hills High School is a more viable option for more families is important. But in fact, we have been increasing enrollment over the last few years. We've been flat the last two years, largely because even though we've increased high school options that have led to more students coming to our schools, we do know that families are leaving, families are priced out of the neighborhood. So on the northwest side, especially where we have challenged scholars that allow students to get a college education paid for by the community foundation, those families are priced out of the neighborhood and can't afford to stay in the neighborhood anymore. And so the housing issues that many of us in the room are a part of are also very much at stake and creating in communities. So we've done a good job of attracting families back to the district. We do need to make sure that we take care of the families that are currently in the district as well, as a community.
I think as we, and it has been, as it has been stated, that we have seen an increase. I know a lot of the families that I talk to, urban and otherwise, want a rich, diverse experience for their kids. The only place that I know of, other than those that expressly do it, is the public schools. And so it's one of the most unique places for fertilizing this cross-cultural, multilingual opportunity. We have what we call both neighborhood schools, but also cultural schools, schools where Spanish is taught at the beginning because the majority of students are Spanish-speaking going in and then transitioned into. The supports that are needed for that, so that it's robust, needs to continue. More opportunities for our kids to have cross-cultural experiences, both in and out of school. And we see that in the Grand Rapids area happening, and certainly the stakeholders that we have. So we have seen an increase in the student population, and certainly more teachers wanting to come here, and sometimes they're priced out, or the salaries aren't there, so we need to also encourage that.
So I think that Grand Rapids Public Schools, and especially being, you know, if I become a board member, one of the things that I would need to balance is figuring out how to really address critical issues within Grand Rapids Public Schools, while also making sure that I'm communicating efficacy, and that I'm communicating the good things that are happening within Grand Rapids Public Schools. And that's, that's kind of the fine line that I believe a board member has to walk, that you have to be an advocate for better schools, but you also have to make sure that it's communicated to the people who currently live within the Grand Rapids Public Schools District that these are quality schools, and that these are good schools for you to send your students to. I look over all of the different schools, all of the different cultural centers, I look at, you know, the neighborhood schools, the theme schools, and I see that there are rich programs within Grand Rapids Public Schools. And I think having the diversity of those programs, that's important for having, for getting parents and students into these programs. But I want to see that going into some of the, some more of the neighborhood schools. For example, I, you know, one thing that I'm interested in seeing is, how can we get gifted and talented programs within elementary and middle schools as, to kind of build that capacity and to build that social capital that can go into a city high, or that can really create cross-cultural social capital across all of the elementary schools and middle schools? That's something that I would like to see, and that can attract more parents, I believe.
I agree with the need to address our neighborhood schools. I think it is awesome that we have these wonderful theme schools that are attractive, but those seats are very limited. And we have a larger district to serve and a community to serve, so we have to invest in those neighborhood schools. I think also, a great piece that is missing with Grand Rapids Public Schools, and I think about it comparative to some of the other neighboring districts, there's a lack of pride there. And I think we have to build that up. That's something that we have to be able to sell to the community at large, our parents and our students, and that is by investing in them. And then we come together. When we build that sense of pride, there's no doubt they want to send their kids to a GRPS school. It is, what other place would you send them? You know, so we have to really invest in that community pride. We have lacked that over the years, and so I would, a lot of programs do it through their sports as a way of building that up. That's something that we've lacked over the years with regards to our city league programs. I think that's a surface place to get people listening and looking again, but it's worth the effort there as well. So we have to overall, you know, rebuild that sense of pride.
Thank you. And one word, one word, should the board include public, community stakeholders, the public, in the selection process for the new superintendent? One word, we'll start with you, Ms. Williams.
Yes.
Yes.
See?
Yes.
Definitely.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Our country is facing a major teacher shortage in the next couple of years. So not only how are we going to make GRPS a school that teachers want to come to, how are we also going to attract bilingual teachers, not only for educational instruction, but also, as you guys mentioned, immersion programs and translation services?
Well, I know there is a severe teacher shortage, even at Grand Valley, there's, in other colleges, people are not going into education because it doesn't pay very well. But we need to motivate and try to instill lifelong learning habits in some of these college students, and try to encourage them, maybe through monetary bonuses, or, in Grand Rapids, I think they tried it several years ago, where they, if they would get a job in Grand Rapids, they would get like housing at a cheaper rate, you know? But that seems to be a problem. But again, we also need to retain the teachers that we do have, and support them in the classroom, and treat them with respect, and not set them up to fail. So that's my ideas on how to encourage teachers to go in and retain the ones that we have, respect and support.
Yeah, this is, this is certainly a state crisis, for sure. I mean, certainly there's ways to increase recruitment. I, you know, pay is one thing, and we've been working on increasing the pay. We did have a significant pay increase in Grand Rapids. It's hard work teaching in Grand Rapids Public Schools. There are a lot more expectations placed on students, on teachers in Grand Rapids Public Schools than elsewhere, and we need to find ways to alleviate that. Like I said earlier, we've spent the last 10 years bashing teachers. There was a popular movie, Waiting for Superman, that just bashed teachers and called them pinheads for being in the classroom. And, you know, that's, that's cost us. People talk about this, 2007, 8,300 new certificates, teaching certificates by the state of Michigan, 2016, less than 3,600. We are, we are, we have encouraged students to not become teachers, period. One thing that we've done in Grand Rapids Public Schools, that I've been a part in bringing my institution with me, Ferris State University, is that we started a Grow Your Own program at Innovation Central High School. There's a new academy. There are 16 ninth graders who are being trained with the idea that they'll become teachers, they'll go on to Ferris, get degrees. We, I think that if we're going to solve, I keep saying, coming back to this, if we're going to solve this problem, it's a community problem. And Grand Rapids Public Schools can increase pay, but we're still going to be tough to compete with everybody else. We need diversity, we need bilingual teachers, but we need to find ways to do it, and growing your own is one solution.
Well, contrary to what Dr. Baker said about the district supporting bilingual education, we support a program called ESL, English as a Second Language, and it is subtractive. That means kids come with their language skills, and they are to leave those after time, after a year, two or three, and transition straight to English with very little support. And that's the crux of our problem. When, when I was Director of Bilingual Education in the district, I developed a clinical school model with Wayne State University, where we hired professors to provide instruction to our paraprofessionals and our bachelor-level teachers, enabling them to become bilingual in a short period of time, and encouraged to do so by federal law. The federal law has, has been in effect since 1974. It went to the Supreme Court in Lau versus Nichols, and it should be, it should be followed here in our district, and that has been the challenge. The law requires that, that language barriers be removed from instruction for all of our children. That means if they come to school speaking Spanish, that we need to, or another language, that we need to provide them a teacher who can remove those language barriers. And we failed to do that. We failed to do that, and that's the crux of the matter. The other is the teachers do not have the respect, as Mr. Bicola said, in the classroom. They do not have the pay compensation. And it might be because we have 49 administrators that are paid $90,000 plus, and another 26 that are paid $100,000 plus. And the, the school system has more security officers that police our schools than even the police force in Wyoming, in terms of number. So we really need to look at where our priorities are and redistribute funds to compensate our teachers adequately, so that people will be attracted into the field.
I think in terms of attracting teachers, we certainly need to hold our higher ed institutions to partnering and producing along with us by providing perhaps full ride for, for teachers, and they have the capacity to do that. And certainly, as Dr. Baker alluded, growing our own and encouraging that within, both within our community and also transplanting, trans, se me olvidó la palabra. But transplanting, that's what I was trying to, those from outside our community into our community that want to live in this kind of smaller city context. So I'm excited for the future. I don't, I don't want to paint a gloom piece here. I think that there's a lot of challenges, but I also think that there's a lot of opportunities if we can bring those folk to the table in order to help us find solutions. And we have seen that over and over again, folk coming to the table, willing to put not just themselves there, but money behind it too, to be able to produce those things. And, and we are at that process, we're in that place. This community, the broader community, has done a lot to invest in this school district.
Yeah, so that, that's a really difficult thing to do. I, I look at, through my work in advising students, and mostly students from a number of different cultures, not many of them are coming to me saying, I want to be a teacher, right? You know, I, even there was one point, because I'm, because I'm a teacher by trade, someone once tried to tell me, you didn't take this job, you didn't choose this profession because you knew you were going to get paid. And if that's the message we're sending, then it's going to be very difficult to, to attract students of color into the profession, into the profession. And so I think, you know, Dr. Baker is absolutely right, that teachers need to get paid more. It needs to be that they are getting paid well, they're not getting paid because they have a heart of gold, which most, a lot of them do. And so the other part of it too is, I think when we're talking about getting, finding teachers who are able to, who are bilingual, it's important to recognize that within Grand Rapids Public Schools, there are what, over 40 different languages spoken within the public schools? So I think, how great is it, one, to have a teacher who's bilingual in Spanish and English? But also, how great is it to have a teacher who's bilingual in Farsi, in Dinka, in Kirwan Dan? And so I think it's important to have, even the frontline staff, to be able to communicate effectively with every single student. Having more and more people endorsed in English as a second language, because we can't have everyone speaking bilingual for all of the languages in the schools.
Well, I am excited about the program that is going to be taking place at Central, and hope it can also be duplicated over at Ottawa. I'm not sure if that's something that can happen, but I think it is important with a district that is more than 70% black and brown students, it's important that they see themselves. When I went to Creston, I saw myself in my teachers, in my principal, and then the administrators in the building. And that was, there was a value there. And then there were relationships built there, and those people were vested in my success. And it is not to say that, that can't develop other places, but if, when I come to this place to be educated, and I don't see myself, and I don't see anybody that looks like me, and I don't think no one cares, and I don't think anyone is really vested in me, then it's easy to check out. And if I've got troubles at home, it's easy to check out. So I think it's important that we take some time to really say, we need to make sure our teaching staff is also reflective. It is a teaching crisis, but we can get people in there who want to do the job. There are people who are there, we just have to reach out to them, we have to recruit them, and make the efforts in that regard. And the other thing is, I, I'll say this really quick, because I'm also out of time, there needs to be a respect and value there. And I think community ride, we let our teachers take so much flak, and they do so much work, and we don't support them, and we don't encourage them and lift them up. And when we start doing that as a community, our kids will do it too.
Thank you. We're going to go speed round 45 seconds, and I've got a tough one for everybody. I actually want to thank Mr. Baker, because as an educator, that I was actually featured in the film Waiting for Superman, and now I'm a public school parent. And my biggest concern right now is sacrificing academics to have a diverse experience for my daughter. And some of the questions from the audience, we talked about, why is there little to no mention of very low reading scores and math scores? And I think this comes to a systemic oppression and equity question, and accountability question, to be honest. Why are black and brown families asked to wait for progress and wait for improved outcomes when you could move, I could move my family to East Grand Rapids or to Rockford, and I don't have to give up the academic piece to be able to have a diverse piece? When we know what can happen and prove what is possible in public education, and we know that there are model places out there, why is it continuously okay, and we're not holding anybody's feet to the fire, for black and brown families to be able to, to have those improved outcomes, get 100% graduation, and move on to college and beyond? Whoever wants to start that one could go. Dr. Flores, I think you're pretty passionate about that.
Well, I have the mic, so I guess I'll go first. 45 seconds. I don't think it's, I don't think these communities should have to wait. I don't believe our communities have to wait. But I will say, because other outside communities may be able to bring that piece, it doesn't necessarily mean that you're getting the best product either. So I definitely believe we need to make strides in those areas, but there is a value in that diversity that our district offers. And if we hold people accountable, our elected officials and our, the administrators, I think we can get those outcomes. But again, it's a matter of advocacy. That's something that has to continue constantly.
So if we can provide context, I don't want to ask that question, so I didn't add all of this movement out of the district type of jargon to it, is why is it that the fact that black and brown students have been the foundation, funding-wise, for the longest for the district, have to wait for improved outcomes, when it's been promised upon, promised upon promise of increasing graduation rates, increasing funding, increasing outcomes? So it wasn't about moving out of the district. It's, I'm here, we've been here, generationally, after generation, and we're still reducing high school dropout after high school dropout, grandmothers, mothers, brothers, sisters, aunts, cousins, and cousins, and every single generation says it's coming.
System, it sounds like systemic inequity within the educational system. Thank you. Yep, systemic inequity and accountability. Yep, systemic inequity and accountability.
Yeah, I, well, and again, it is where our students need wraparound services. And I don't think that as a district, we are armed to do that. And maybe we're not taking it serious and the, really understanding the true implications are not there. It is something that, again, as a community that is there, we don't have an option to leave. I mean, the reality is many times, black and brown students don't have the option to leave, but then yet we're still not getting the outcomes. And again, we need to go and advocate and demand and hold accountable. And then really say, okay, we've, we've heard this before, what's next? How do we get outcomes now? We keep saying the same things, when do we get the outcome?
Thank you, Ms. Williams. If I can ask one thing, who do we hold accountable to that?
I think you have to, you know, definitely bring your issues to your board, but the board is the person who, the persons who are, are dealing with the superintendent. They're evaluating the superintendent. But you have to advocate every step of the way. From the teacher to the, from the secretary to the teacher to the board to the superintendent. It's not an, you know, I, I've said, there's some fatigue involved in that advocacy, but you, you can't let up.
Thank you.
I, you know, honestly, to answer why would be, any answer would be an excuse, right? I, I think that there are a lot of factors. And so the, the important thing I think of is how, how are we as community representatives? How are we working to bring those voices to the forefront? And how are we creating strategies to bring those voices to the forefront? Because there's going to be power in numbers. There's always power in numbers. And so that's going to be important to me. But I also think, you know, in, in creating accountability, I think we need to look at our communities. Well, first off, we need to look at the, at what the administration is doing and how the administration is communicating. We need to look at our communities. We need to look at our state levels. And I guess to finish this off, I'd say, living in the southeast side, I have no neighborhood association. I need that neighborhood association to help these voices.
I, I think that having been on the board for five and a half years, I think I have seen a peeling of layers in understanding data, how it's presented to us, how it's juggled, to understand the reality, how it's followed in terms of programming and dollars that are, that are decided and words, it's decided, becomes really complex. I think we do have to hold our superintendent accountable and she has to hold her cabinet accountable. And that person has to be willing to, to be able to say, if that person's not cutting it, to make a choice in terms of getting the people that are able to do the kind of work or the, the kind of transformational plan that we want to see.
You know, when I was elected to this board four years ago, we were at less than fifty percent graduation rates for African-Americans. They were at forty percent, forty-four percent for Hispanic-Americans, fifty percent overall. And I was the first to say, it is unacceptable. Everyone else was clapping. Wonderful, we're making, making gains. And they'll, they'll say today, sixty-six percent is, is where we're at today. And I still say it's unacceptable. We need accelerated movement. We need to, we need a, a transformation plan that works and that holds the people accountable. And if you had a losing football team or a basketball team or a baseball team, who would you replace if they weren't winning?
I think a, a lot of it has to deal with competency. When I was talking to Dr. Flores out in the parking lot, when I was testing my children for the map test, I was actually putting the keyboards on top of the towers and the principal was removing them, putting them down. And remember, I'm teaching at the kindergarten level. I said, what are you doing? He said, well, the kids have to type. I go, listen, these are five-year-old children. They have to use the mouse and to click and drag. And then even that's hard for them, the hand-eye coordination. We need a competent person who understands early childhood education. You can't take a high school principal and put him down at elementary level and expect him to know everything. We need competent individuals in specific areas so we can help children learn the way they know how to learn, through hands-on activities, not sitting down and on their bus and with a pencil and paper. That's not how they learn. They use, learn through manipulatives and other things.
We should absolutely hold the board and the superintendent accountable completely and the community accountable. But ultimately, if we're going to talk about this as a systematic, a systemic problem, it has to be addressed systemically. And that is, and so, again, we talked about the resources. You should find out whether or not your superintendent and your board is spending the, the resources as efficiently as possible to do as much as it possibly can. But you should be in the state legislature telling them to make sure that we get the resources that we need. And the fact is, is that we've seen time and again over the last ten years, resources cut. I mean, so black and brown communities have, have been cut and harmed in many ways. And, and then school districts have to take care of it. So I say that we have accomplished a lot considering declining resources, but we haven't accomplished what we need to accomplish and we need a state legislature and a government who's going to support black and brown children. It's a systemic problem.
All right, well, I want to thank you all for answering some very hard questions and humoring us on speed rounds and whatnot. So I'm going to give you guys thirty seconds to recap if you'd like to clarify anything or just go over anything again. And we'd also like to inform everyone here, we do have the room till eight. So if there are any specific questions that you have for a candidate, we invite you to stay and speak to them. And I would also like to remind you, don't forget, we have Kimberly Davis's information and possible answers to any questions you have on her stance. Thank you. We'll start down there.
I'll start since I have the mic. So this is really hard work and I hope that everybody here has listened to how hard the work is and I encourage people to be engaged. I would also, I would say that I want, you are, you are also responsible. And when people talk about what they can do and when, when there's a critique of what Grand Rapids Public Schools has done, I'm always like, what can you do? Can you bring your community, your church, your institution with you and do this work? And whoever gets elected, whatever the board will be, you should be responsible for what happens in the schools as well.
We need to have, to hold the board accountable. The experience that I've had is that they have been complicit in covering up things that are not appropriate going on within the district, especially when it comes to with children. We need to focus on children and the respect of the parents and the children and keep them safe and not to misuse them as pawns to set up personal vendettas like I've had experience with my own professional career in Grand Rapids Public Schools. I know what's, needs to be fixed. I know what's broken and I would be a good candidate for a board member.
You know, I have a little grocery store on the southwest side. I talk to kids and parents all the time and they tell me that they go to this charter school or that charter school and why they left Grand Rapids. And it's usually because the, the schools are perceived as unsafe, the academic program is, is perceived as inferior and the, the response that they get from our administrators is inadequate. We need to change that. We, we do not have a good reputation in our district and our, in our, in our population that we serve. And that's, that's the issue. My no votes have been on issues of, of school security, on respect for staff and making sure that, that children who bring weapons to schools or assault teachers and staff are not allowed back into that same school. You know, I believe that, that we have to have some sense of security for our teachers and for our community. And, and that's the reputation that I think really plagues the school system.
I think my desire to run for a second term is that I've learned a lot in five and a half years, but I think that the desire is to continue to transform and that's not a cliche. This community has been changing quite a bit and, and educationally too. We need to continue that. I think we're at a critical juncture in that there's five seats up, but also that we have an opportunity to put a superintendent in there that's going to meet our needs for where we want to be at. So that, that's really critical.
Yeah, I think, for me, everything we do needs to be for the kids. I think that Grand Rapids Public Schools, everyone in the district needs to, we need to get the word out that you are a stakeholder if you live in the district and that you have a stake in every single child who succeeds within Grand Rapids Public Schools. And that's what's important to me. So I think that making sure that voices are heard, making sure that there's trust between the community and Grand Rapids Public Schools and investing in areas that are absolutely critical right now, that's going to be important to me.
Issues that are important to me are access and opportunity. That's important. And when we don't make sure our children have access, then we have denied them opportunities that will impact them for a lifetime. And we have to be intentional about that.
Thank you all. Thank you.